Good morning, everybody. Sonya, you can let me know when we're ready to begin.
We are ready.
We'll go ahead and start the February 18th, 2022 St. Paul Planning Commission meeting. This meeting is being held remotely as it's either practical or imprudent for the commission or its members to meet in person. Pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D point O two. In light of the ongoing pandemic, we will be appearing remotely. And we will begin today's meeting by having a roll call. Sonya?
Commissioner DeJoy. Commissioner Grill.
Here.
Commissioner Holt.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Commissioner Cantler.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell. Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Presley.
Here.
Commissioner Rizberg.
Here.
Commissioner Said.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Tagheya. Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Underwood.
Here.
Mr. Yang. And of course Chair Wrangle Morales.
Here.
So, well, I don't have any announcements this morning. I'll turn it over to Director Padilla.
Good morning, everybody. I really don't have much in terms of announcements, but slightly informal this morning. One item that I thought I'd bring up briefly is some of the commissioners who have been on the commission for several years may remember we did a sort of a poll survey a couple of years, over a couple of years ago about the potential use of tablets for planning commission meetings. So if the city were to make one available for use during meetings, this would be in lieu of paper packets when we're in person again during the meetings for, to review the meeting materials. And so that, that survey was essentially, you know, if we, if one was available, would you use it? Several of the commissioners at that time indicated that they would, you know, if there was one available, they would just use their own personal device and bring it with them. And so where we're at with this right now is I've been beginning to look at this again. We had tabled the whole initiative during the pandemic because we didn't obviously need such things when everybody's at home. So now what I'm trying to do is see if we still have budget for this, and if so, is there leadership support? I certainly think it makes sense when we have in-person meetings to have, 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 you know, these devices as, as an option for, for people. And so maybe informally, if, if you're hearing this now, if you, if you wouldn't mind thinking about the question and letting me know if there was one available, and that's still an if, because we have to find the funds for it, would you use it or would you more likely bring your own device and, and use that? Or thirdly, if you would prefer a paper packet. So just to understand those three options, to let me know what your, your preferences would be, that would be super helpful. And that's all I have. Next chair.
And Louise, would you want emails on that or is it going to be to let you know?
You know, just to make it easier, I might send out a little survey that would probably make it easier for me. So to have you all complete the, the two or three question survey that it would consist of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for the director? All right, seen and we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is zoning committee. And I'll turn over to Commissioner Riley.
Chair, this is Commissioner Said, I think Mr. Riley is ninety-three.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Said.
Thank you, Chair. This is Commissioner Said. We had our zoning meeting last week. We had a one item for twelve ninety-six Hudson Road, Hudson rezoning from office service to B two community business. I believe we had Mr. Germany to present.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Said. The, the request is for rezoning of the southwest corner of that intersection of English and Hudson Road from OS to B two, which would match the zoning immediately adjacent to the west. The committee and, and staff recommend approval for all the reasons shown in the, in the draft resolution of the planning commission. As a practical matter, the reason for the rezoning is to allow the expansion of the adjacent construction business onto this site. And, and they would combine the two buildings and go across parcel lines. There's also a minor land division to change the parcel lines to make that easier that, that's going on right now. But we haven't heard from the district council on this, and there was no support or opposition from the neighbors that we heard, and the, the committee recommendation is for approval on this.
Thank you, Mr. Germany. So we had a public hearing, we had, no one spoke in support and/or opposition. After discussion committee, committee voted in favor of six and oh. Chair.
Okay. So that was a motion to rezone from OS Office Service to B two Community Business with approval six to zero. Is there any discussion on the motion? All right, seen and Sonya, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Grill.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Commissioner Holt.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantler.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Presley.
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Said.
Yes.
Commissioner Tagheya.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Underwood.
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, so that motion does carry, Commissioner Said.
Chair, that's all I have. I'm not sure if anything with side review. Mr. Germany, is anything in side review?
Director, I think has a response on that.
Yep, Chair, Commissioner Said, the, the next week's site, site time review, there are no cases, there's going to be an internal staff discussion about infill housing. So it sort of relates to our ongoing one-to-four housing study to get some staff input on some options we're looking at. That's it.
Thank you, Chair, and that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Complanning Committee. I'll turn over to Commissioner Holt.
Good morning, everyone. We have one item on our agenda. We touched on this slightly last week. This is the zoning study of petition requirements for certain zoning applications, and I believe we have Katie here to talk about, talk to us about this.
Good morning, thank you, Commissioner Holt and Commissioner Chair Wrangle Morales. I know it's been some time since I've had an item before the planning commission. I had a chance to meet some of the new commissioners at the committee meeting, and for those of you that I haven't had a chance to meet, just want to introduce myself. My name is Katie Dadliz, and I'm a planner in the planning and economic development. I am going to share my screen. And if someone can let me know that you can see my screen, that'd be great. Yes, okay, good. So I'm here this morning to talk, as Commissioner Holt noted, initiating the petition requirement zoning study. I've got about ten slides to share with you. So at the outset, I just want to let the commissioners know that what we're asking of you to do today is to initiate the petition requirement zoning study. And we're recommending this because the study is an implementation action item that's called for in a 2040 comprehensive plan. That helps to implement the plan and further some planning commission policy and inflammation, implementation action priorities. We're looking to remove from the zoning code unnecessary hurdles to small business, commercial and residential development with the study. So to begin with, I think that it's important for you to know that consent petitions are prerequisites for some zoning applications, meaning that an application will not be accepted in our office without a valid petition. Typical language in the zoning code states a notarized petition of at least two-thirds of the owners of the described parcels of real estate within one hundred feet of the subject property has been submitted stating their support for the use. So that's the general petition requirement we're talking about with this study. Most non-conforming use permit applications require a petition be submitted to make a complete application. An example of a non-conforming use is a triplex in a single-family zoning district or an industrial use in a business district. Non-conforming uses can be established, and an applicant needs to prove, among other things, that a use has been in existence for more than ten years in order to do this. Non-conforming uses can also be reestablished. If a non-conforming use ceases to exist for one year, the non-conforming status is lost and must be formally reestablished with a permit from the planning commission. I should note here that at the Conference of Neighborhood Planning Committee meeting, Commissioner Grill asked whether the study might look at expanding the one-year timeframe for reestablishing non-conforming uses. And I just want to let commissioners know that the study will not be looking at changing this, because the one-year timeframe is required by state statute, and we're only looking at changes to the city zoning code, not state statutes with this study. Non-conforming uses can also be expanded or relocated with planning commission approval, and all of these permits require a petition be submitted as part of a complete application. If there is no petition, there is no application. This means that some reasonable proposals may never make their way to the planning commission for consideration due to the petition hurdle, or that some applications take a long time to be submitted because the would-be applicant is having a hard time gathering the required number of signatures to produce a valid petition. In addition to the need for petition to apply for non-conforming use permits, there are a couple of conditional uses that require petitions as well. These are for carriage houses and reuse of large structures. Reuse of large structure might involve a church or a school building, for example, being proposed to be used for a commercial purpose, perhaps an event center. The number of permit applications that we get varies from year to year, from a low of seven in twenty, both twenty and twenty-two-one, to a high of eighteen in both twenty-eleven and twenty-twelve. Some would-be applicants have difficulty obtaining the required number of signatures on a petition, and the reasons for this can be many and include non-responsive absentee landlords, especially when properties are owned by folks from out of town or financial institutions. It can be very difficult to determine who is an eligible signer of a petition and how to contact that person. Nearby condominiums significantly increase the number of signatures needed on a petition, and restricted entryways and lobbies of condominiums can make it hard to gain access to a building to be able to knock on doors and ask for signatures. Concern about competition from the proposed use could also be a reason would-be applicants have a hard time gathering signatures. In addition, some property owners may have racist motivations for opposing legitimate projects and refuse to add their signature on a petition. Consent petition requirements can slow businesses trying to reoccupy space that requires a non-conforming use permit. And I would note that there have been a few instances where applicants have received a variance of the petition requirement from the planning commission, but this is a relatively rare occurrence. So due to the pandemic, the petition requirement has been waived by a series of mayoral executive orders for almost two years now. We haven't seen a rush to submit permit applications as a result, but we have seen an application or two come in that would not have otherwise been submitted or submitted as quickly. As I noted earlier, we saw seven non-conforming use permit applications in both twenty-two and in twenty-two-one. So the purpose of the zoning study is to review the language in the zoning code and recommend amending language that presents unnecessary hurdles to small-scale commercial and residential development. And specifically, the zoning code will look at the petition requirement for non-conforming and conditional uses and propose amendments to the required findings for these permits. So in terms of the scope of the study, it will look at petition requirements for non-conforming uses and for conditional uses. It will not look at petition requirements for rezoning property. These requirements are regulated by state statute and can't be amended by the city council, and as I noted earlier, the study will not look at extending the one-year timeframe related to reestablishing non-conforming uses for that same reason. In terms of timeline, staff will be working on scoping, research, and collaboration this winter, and then begin work on drafting the amendments. That work is already underway. And after that, we'll take the study through the planning commission review and public hearing process in the spring and hopefully through the city council in the summer. And so today, the Conference of Neighborhood Planning Committee is recommending the petition study be initiated by the planning commission and a resolution initiating the zoning studies in your packet for your consideration. And that is all I have. I would be happy to answer questions if folks have them.
Chair, if I may, doesn't seem like there's any questions. This was passed by the Conference of Neighborhood Planning Committee unanimously. I think we talked about the discussion we had last week, so.
So, but I think we need is a motion to initiate the zoning study, and then I'll take a second.
All right, so some moved.
All right, is there a second on the motion to initiate the zoning study of petition requirements for certain zoning applications?
Commissioner Hood, I will second.
All right, a motion by Commissioner Holt, seconded by Commissioner Hood. Any discussion on the motion? All right, seen none, Sonya, can we get a roll call?
Commissioner Grill.
Yes.
Commissioner Hood.
Yes.
Commissioner Holt.
Yes.
Commissioner Cantler.
Yeah.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Presley.
Yes.
Commissioner Rizberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Said.
Yes.
Commissioner Tagheya.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Underwood.
Yes.
Chair Wrangle Morales.
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, so that motion does carry to initiate the zoning study on the petition for requirements of certain zoning applications. Commissioner Holt.
Conference of Neighborhood Planning Committee met last Wednesday. There were two items before us. The first one was four oh-two Hall Avenue, a proposal for designation of the property as a St. Paul heritage preservation site. I believe that already went through the Heritage Preservation Committee. There was really no discussion about this. We are bringing that forward to the planning commission, I presume, at our next meeting. The other item on our agenda was the zoning study of traditional neighborhoods, so T districts, with, to initiate a zoning study that was presented by Spencer Johnson from the city. That, again, will probably be coming to us either the next week or two. There was some discussion during that point. So there's sort of three big pieces to this. I'm sure we'll get into it more, but the discussion around looking at our zoning, our T zoning districts, the discussion from the committee mostly was around important to make housing that is affordable. We wondered if height, height was going to be looked at as well. If there's anyone else from the committee that would like to add comments to our discussion, I'd certainly be interested in hearing that. But this, again, is just to initiate a zoning study around T one, T two, T three, T four.
Okay, any questions for the Chair of the Complaim Neighborhood Committee? Seen none, I think we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is transportation. Commissioner Rizberg?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry, everyone, can, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Oh, Commissioner, is Commissioner Rizberg the one that froze?
Yes.
Okay. And I see Mr. Germany is raising his hand, Mr. Germany.
Thank you, Chair. With Commissioner Rizberg's connection severed here, maybe I'll just jump in with Transportation Committee. There's no meeting next week, there normally would have been on Monday, but it's a holiday, so none then, and the next meeting is March seventh, so we'll look forward to that. Maybe one, one other announcement I'll make on Transportation Committee is that they welcomed two new members last time that, that you appointed, Chair. They are youth on boards members. One is in high school, the other one is recently out of college. And it's part of a mayor's office initiative to get more youth on various boards in the city, and Transportation Committee is one of those that they focused on. So we're glad to have a couple of young people. That's, that's a segment of the population that I know over the years, the committee has wondered what the impact is on young people, especially transit issues, but sometimes other transportation issues as well. Their names are Zoe Gale and Dewan Hall, and, and so glad to welcome Zoe and Dewan to the, to the committee.
Okay, well, that's, that's good to hear, and hopefully they find the process rewarding and, and that the Transportation Committee can benefit from their input. And Bill, I, I did receive your emails, I'll respond to that here, and I'll withhold any additional announcements until I get more direction from it.
Sounds good, thank you.
I see Commissioner Holt has his hand up.
Yeah, just a quick question, just from my understanding, and maybe some of us new members, what is exactly is the relationship with the Transportation Committee to the Planning Commission? Like, I know we don't ever, you know, we hear reports, but it, you know, specific items don't come to us, so maybe it's just a little clarity for, for me on that.
Mr. Germany. Sure. Thank you, Chair. The Transportation Committee is an odd committee. It's, it's different than all the other ones. It is a, a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. It's unique in its structure, where it has four planning commissioners, but then the other eight are not planning commissioners. Most of their items do not go through the planning commission, some of them do. If it's a major planning project, it tends to go through the planning commission also. But most of the items you see are, are Public Works projects or Ramsey County projects that either they're just providing informal feedback on, or they're providing a recommendation for the city council. Years ago, it was determined before I was staffing the committee that minor projects didn't need to go through the planning commission, that they could go straight to the city council, you know, such as a reconstruction of three blocks of a street or something like that. So that is the relationship. It's, it's interesting in that it's the committee of the planning commission, but mostly non-planning commissioners, and mostly the items don't go through the full planning commission.
Thank you.
Thanks for filling in, Bill. I apparently lost my connection. I don't know how much of my report you heard.
We heard your name, I believe, so. It tricked me because I thought my computer froze, but Mr. Germany was able to.
I would be happy to repeat what I said, unless Bill's already covered it, that we, our, our next meeting has been postponed due to the holiday on Monday, and it will be on March seventh. But the, and, and agenda is still to be determined. But the other thing I mentioned is we welcome two new members to the committee. And they are participants on, in the mayor's youth on board initiative, and, which is a, really a wonderful program to expose young people to local government and getting them involved in more, you know, doing more civic engagement. And so we welcomed Zoe Gale, who's a recent graduate of Brandeis University, and Dewan Hall, who's a tenth grader at Johnson High School. So they're both very interested in transit and transportation issues, and we were delighted to have them join the committee. So that was what I tried to explain to no audience but my four walls.
Thank you, Commissioner Rizberg. We'll move on to the next item, which is communication nominations. And I will begin by announcing that Commissioner Underwood will be served as the co-chair of the Riverview Station area planning task force going forward, relieving the, from her duties of Commissioner Grill. And so thanks to Commissioner Underwood for assuming that role, and I will then now turn to her to, for an update on communications and nominations.
Sure, thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and, and I appreciate that opportunity and the leadership from Commissioner Grill. As far as communications and nominations, we have no report this week. Thank you.
Sorry, my, I was muted. We'll, we'll move on to communications and nomination, sorry, task force and ASAM reports, and Commissioner Underwood, are you reporting on that this week, or is that still Commissioner Grill?
Oh, no, I, I have not, I have not participated yet.
Commissioner Grill?
Yep, this is Commissioner Grill. So first of all, thank you to Commissioner Underwood for taking over for me. I really, really appreciate it. And the February meeting for the Riverview Stationary Task Course was canceled, and so that will pick up again at the, the first meeting in March, which is the, the first Tuesday in March. So that'll be the first meeting that Commissioner Underwood is taking over. And there's not an agenda that I've seen yet for the March meeting. So we are in, in good shape for a handover. And that is all.
Commissioner Grill. Okay, thank you for that, Commissioner Grill. So I think we'll move on to old business. New business, or any items that a commissioner would like to add or discuss at the next agenda? All right, seen none, we will go ahead and conclude the February eighteenth, twenty-two St. Paul Planning.
Excuse me, I just have one question. Let's just have one question.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Mitchell, because, you know, the pandemic is changing and the numbers are changing, is there any communications that's happening about us meeting in person? I'd like to know sooner than later if that is a conversation getting ready to happen.
Okay, Louise, is there an update on returning back to normal?
Thank you, Chair, and Commissioner Mitchell, good question. I'm glad somebody asked that. I have a similar question. I have not heard any changes yet. There was a mayoral order that essentially distinguished between city council and city boards and commissions as it related to meeting format, and so enabling boards, city boards and commissions to continue with virtual meetings, and I have not heard that there's been any change to that, though, you know, given the changing conditions, would there be some consideration for, you know, moving back to in-person at some time? I, it's a good question, so it's something I'm going to raise internally and see if there's any additional direction. I would say that I would advocate for a lot of notice before we would do that switch, and so I wouldn't, I wouldn't be nervous about, about that at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Mitchell, and Louise, any update on that? I know everybody in, in the commission would appreciate it, just to properly prepare.
Definitely, thank you.
So seeing no additional comments, we will go ahead and conclude the February eighteenth, twenty-twenty-two same-fall planning commission meeting. Thanks, everybody, for joining. I hope everybody has a good weekend, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Yes.